All right, how are we doing on head count here?
We're looking for Council of Connell. Is Counselor Devlin coming to this meeting? Do we know he's in another? I know he has.
He may be late because he had an appearance. I just sent the invitation and new to counselors Connell and Vogel.
Very good.
Malsory missing.
Did you send to Counsel Vogel as well? Okay, great.
I just, I just sent it to him again.
All right.
Bruce at Vogel at large.com, right? You can also dial in on the guest thing and I can patch him in. There he is.
Very good. Sorry.
Not at all. We seem to have, we seem to have lost Counselor Connell though. I just emailed him again.
I just texted them.
I'm here. Counselor Lane is on two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Let's give Counselor Connell one more minute. Well, we're behind enough. Why don't we get started? Go ahead.
Okay, we have a roll call for the meeting. City Council, regular meeting of November ninth, Counselor Tanta.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
I'm here.
Counselor Devlin is absent. Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor Connell has not joined yet. Counselor Shan.
Present.
And Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Nine present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Any late filed items?
There are two late file items. There is a commendation on the election order two twenty-one. And there are compost guidelines, communication two seventy-eight.
Have those been emailed around?
Where are those? I was to say maybe not.
Looks like they weren't.
Let me, it's never too late, is it not?
It's not too late, but I do need a motion to waive the rules and let you email it.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Why don't you send those around?
You have to give me one minute. I'm at my home computer and I am. I will send the polished version in a minute. I have this version which will suffice for the present moment. Mr. President, it's going to take me fifteen minutes or so because I've got to log into my other computer.
Okay, well, I'll take a motion to table late file items. So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I will get them to everyone within short distance. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's move on. So. We've tabled for the moment late file items. We're now on to public comment, which is item four on our agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak in public comment, please raise your hand electronically. You each get two minutes. Give your name and your home address, your home legal address. And you can speak on anything on our agenda. First speaker that I have is Molly Edinburgh.
Hi, counselors. That's Molly Attenborough calling, recycling and energy manager for the city of Newport and thirty-five Toppens Lane. Writing or talking this evening in support of our climate resiliency plan, which is currently in the council's planning and development committee. This plan represents the culmination of past studies, including the city's master plan, and focused in and identified climate hazards and at-risk assets and vulnerabilities in Newburyport. This two-year process engaged key stakeholders and community members who contributed to the creation of this plan. There were twelve members, including the mayor and Counselor Connell, and several city staff members, along with our dedicated co-chairs David Chatfield and Mike Morse. The plan highlights resiliency planning efforts to date, our climate change hazards, the city's vulnerabilities to those hazards, and identifies adaptation strategies and recommendations. The committee has met with the planning and committee last week and is available for any questions that you all might have. And then secondly, I understand that there was a late file sent in regarding composting in Newburyport. And that was put together by ACES. And that is, that was in response to the council's review a couple of years ago of the waste reduction plan and the call for more composting education and awareness in the city of Newport in order to reduce our solid waste disposal numbers and costs. And again, any questions you have about that, I'm around if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tom Coulterjohn. Allow him to talk. Mr. Coulterjohn, I think you need to go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, name and address, please.
Thank you. Tom Coulterjohn, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The Newburyport Preservation Trust strongly supports the proposed clarification before you tonight regarding the enforcement of the state building code. This is straightforward and is an affirmation of the state building code and local zoning codes as they relate to one another. And a reminder that both codes support the integrity of our historic buildings. The trust thanks counselors Agaman and Shan for sponsoring this amendment. And we strongly urge you to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andrew Port. Mr. Port. Mr. Port. We can't hear you. Can anybody hear him?
No.
Director Port. Director Port. No dice. Try unmuting yourself, Director Port. Not working. How about now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, Zoom froze up and said my mic wasn't working. Apologize. I just wanted to second the comments that Molly had made about the resiliency plan. I guess the bottom line, I guess it would say is that this is a new issue from a planning perspective, relatively new for the city of Newport to be planning really long-term for things like sea level rise. I mentioned that one because it's the city's chief land use professional. My biggest concern is future development on Plum Island and protection of the wastewater treatment facility. The council's already taken action and the city's already pursuing some, you know, near-term protection of the treatment plant from sea level rise and storm surge, the flooding that can happen increasing over time. But I am concerned that we changed the growth of the development that is still happening on Plum Island for the same reason. But with that, I understand the council will either be approving or receiving and filing that plan. And I recommend that the city continue to try to implement the recommendations of that plan, which are to plan long-term for climate change and other resiliency issues that the city will have long-term.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? In public comments, I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, let the record show that Counselor Connell has joined us. Apologize for the confusion. Can we maybe get back to item three, which is the late file items? Did everyone receive the late file items in their email? Please, everyone get them?
Yes.
Okay. So we have them. We know what they are. Clerk, if you could describe each one for the benefit of the public, then we can decide what to do with them.
You know, give me one second. I I want to be careful about the first one since it's dear to my heart.
Point of order. Point of order. For a second.
Yes.
I've looked at the the second one that comes in as a PDF and it is not compost guidelines. It is it is election day ballot counting guidelines.
Oh, my, my mistake. Hold on.
So before we untable it.
Right. Give me one more minute here. I don't know why that would have happened. Hold on for one second. You know, I thought after the election I might have a stress-free night, but here we are. I know Molly sent it to me.
Actually, I think I sent that.
No, it was a froze con.
Then I will forward that. Thank you. Request for late file. Okay, here it is here. I'm going to forward this to everyone right now. That has been sent.
All right.
Check. Counselor McCauley, you may wish to reconsider your commendation after this.
Yeah, let's revoke that.
I'll enable editing.
Okay, how about a motion to take off the table, item three, late filed items?
Yes, I moved.
Need a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it's off the table. Clerk Jones, please read us the first item.
I would be happy to. It's a resolution for commendation for the two thousand twenty elections. Whereas two thousand twenty is a state and federal, including US presidential election year. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic padded a level of anxiety to the voting process. And because of this vote by mail was added as an option to early voting and in-person voting. And whereas the clerk's office coordinated both a contested primary for the US Senate, Massachusetts State Representative, and a US presidential election under these difficult circumstances, now therefore be it resolved that the city council acknowledges praises and extends its sincere gratitude for the outstanding work in both administering a smooth election and alleviating public anxiety about the voting process by the Office of City Clerk, volunteer poll workers, the facilities management division of DPS, the police department, and all the other city departments and employees associated with the two thousand twenty elections jointly submitted counselors' argument and McCauley with the footnote that they wished all eleven counselors to sign it. That is the late file. Thank you so much.
Okay, and what's the other late file?
The other late file is the one that I can't find. This is the one that I just sent you. Hold on for one second. It's the Comco's final guard guides, so-called. Want me to send it back to you? And no, I have it. It's the complete guide to the Comco's for a healthier Newport in support of the city of Newport by the Alliance of Climate and Environmental Stewards. It goes on for eight pages. It describes composting as the best ways we can reduce our carbon footprint.
That's enough. That's enough. We're just considering what to do. Will we accept the late file items? Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to accept late file items.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so one goes into orders and one goes into communications. Got that, Clerk Jones, we all said.
I have them. Yep.
Okay, Mayor's comment. Let me recognize the mayor. Hold on. Day now, I'll do it. Mayor Holiday, you're on.
Good evening, counselors. I sent you an update late this afternoon. And I would like to just join you in absolutely recognizing the amazing work of our city clerk, Rich Jones, his staff, the board of registrars, and everyone who helped DPS staff agree with you in terms of this election. It was pretty remarkable. It went very smoothly in these unprecedented times. And I can't thank you enough for your diligence and the hours and hours and hours of work that you and staff put in to ensure that this election was, went off without a hitch. And I'm congratulations to all the voters in Newport. Eighty-two percent turnout. That's just remarkable. And let's keep it going and make sure that we vote at that level all the time. Quick COVID nineteen update. Again, very concerned about the fact that our cases are rising. We now have thirty-seven active cases and a total of two hundred twenty cases to date. We've done a really good job in terms of keeping our numbers down. And I'm just going to keep reiterating, you know, wearing masks, washing your hands, social distancing. You know, please, you know, use good judgment and decisions you're making as we go forward, especially as we move it inside into the colder months. I did give you detailed information about how the Department of Health and the schools are working together, how we manage cases. One of the things that's been challenging is we've been getting a lot of requests to, well, who are these people who are positive? Obviously HIPAA laws apply. We cannot tell the public where and who these cases are. And so people need to be diligent in terms of following protocols. There's information about quarantining there also in terms of what we're doing. And it's, I just can't emphasize enough, we don't have a strong sector. We did have a small cluster in a long-term care. We have either a parent or students bring it into a family. We did have one family of five that was in quarantine. We had four more cases at the high school this weekend. But the systems that were set up in place to, you know, continuing operating the schools and not having to shut down, as so many schools in the state are doing once there is a case or two, and they go to remote for a couple of weeks, then come back. We are able to manage with the systems we've set up and the contact tracing. We've also hired another part-time nurse to assist in the contact tracing because it's getting, you know, quite extensive, particularly in the schools. So any questions about that, feel free to reach out to my office about what we're doing there. Just wanted to let you know that there was a site visit on the Berman and Revetment Project behind the wastewater treatment plant today. And the bids are due November seventeenth. So looking forward to opening those and seeing where we land in terms of costs. And we'll certainly report back to you at your next meeting. Safe routes to school on High Street. Again, the project continues to progress. Parcella is the contractor and the subs working on finishing the sidewalks during November and through as much of December as they can, weather permitting. I just am so pleased the way the sidewalks are coming together on both Merrimack Street and High Street. It's just really, really nice to see. Complete Streets on Parker Street was initiated. Aquiline is the contractor there. They started doing some of the drainage work. They will make some progress and then have to shut down for the winter, but they've also dug eighteen-foot hole to set up the conduit for the Hawk system. So that electrical work should be in place and secure before they shut down the work this fall. The other piece that I'm very happy to say is that three hundred-foot section that's in Newbury that we've been, you know, really wanting to make that connection. Jordy Vining went and met with the selectmen in Newbury and they voted unanimously to apply for a mass trails grant. And so that hopefully we can connect the entire rail system shortly. The other pieces I just wanted to let you know quickly is that the Alliance for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. You do have a list of the individuals that were selected out of the thirty-five or so applicants, really qualified. You know, amazing group of people stepped forward and we've asked them to stay engaged because as we start rolling out different projects and activities, we would like to pull some of the volunteers back into the fold. That information will be posted on the mayor's blog by Matt Coogan tomorrow. And finally, I just would like to thank Andy Port and Molly Attenborough for their comments about the resiliency plan. This was a long, involved, detailed process. I'm very, very, very proud of the document that we put together that contains really solid information to help guide the city as we go forward dealing with climate change and storm surge. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Are there any questions from counselors there? Yes, Counselor Shan.
Mayor, thank you for all the work, your comments you said about safe routes to school. I agree with you that the High Street sidewalks look great. And for also having some of the construction equipment moved up to High Street because I know the folks at Cushing Park are glad.
Yes, early morning beep, beep, beeps of trucks gets old.
It's six thirty. Yes, I agree with you wholeheartedly and they appreciate it too. Quick question. I did get a few pictures and messages yesterday from constituents who were downtown during one of the rallies, noticing that some of the folks out there do protesting and whatnot didn't have masks on. And I know that asking people to put masks on is tough. But are there anything, things that we can do to help with the health department and the police department and maybe having masks to pass out to people who are standing out there protesting?
Just, well, we have distributed over a thousand masks and, you know, we certainly can continue to do so. The police did approach the protesters and ask and inform them that we do have a mandatory mask ordinance. You know, again, I don't believe there was much of a positive response to that advocacy. According to the governor's last week's executive order that he said that your boards of health can now issue individual ordinances for upping fines. We've had a really good compliance, I think, since we set up the mandatory mask zone. I've been very pleased with what I've seen for the most part downtown. But if we are going to continue to see these weekend events, I'll call them, then we probably need to get the Board of Health to move forward with instituting fines.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Holiday.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the mayor? Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Okay, back to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for October twenty-sixth. Are there no communications? There are no transfers. There's one appointment. Appointment one ninety-eight, Elaine Paglier, thirty-nine Jefferson Street to the Council on Aging until five thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. The following items are removed from their respective committees with the motion approved the consent agenda. Budget Finance has ordered two eighteen, the supplemental budget for eighteen thousand Noshore Tech School. Planning and Development has ordinance fifty-four, enforcement of the building code, and Communication two seventy-seven, climate resiliency plan. That's all I have coming out. That would be the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good. So by acclamation, that is done. Regular agenda, we have the mayor's update.
A motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Appointments.
Perhaps, Mr. President, we would get to the late file communication next.
Sounds good.
So that would be the compost guidelines that I started to talk about. It goes on for eight pages.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Very good.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's referred. Okay, now we're on to appointments.
Right, second reading of appointments. We have three appointments. Appointment one ninety-five, Thomas F. O'Brien, eleven Mosley Avenue, CPA Committee, eleven-one, two thousand twenty. Appointment one ninety-six, Lisa Rowan, seventeen Lordman Street, to the Disabilities Commission until eleven-one, two thousand twenty. And Appointment one ninety-seven, Constance Preston, eighteen Atwood Street, to the Tree Commission until eleven-thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to collectively approve.
Hold on. Is it, is it meant to be two thousand twenty-one for the first two appointments or?
I'm sorry, that must be yes. Yes, I'm sorry. You are correct. Thank you for that scribbles error.
Okay. So we're going to correct that so that it's two thousand twenty-one for the CPA and for the disabilities. Counselor Khan.
Yes, just a question. I thought the CPA committee was a two-year. But I'm guessing you guys would know. I can look at the rules quickly, but are you sure it's a year?
I don't know one way or another. Is Chief Coogan on? If he knows.
I actually have in our agenda itself, two thousand twenty-three, which makes so much more sense to me than one year.
And what about Disabilities Commission?
Same, two thousand twenty-three, same for Tree Commission.
Counselor McCauley.
I would confirm that. I went back to last week's, last meeting's agenda and they were both twenty. I would confirm that. I went back to last week's, last meeting's agenda and they were both twenty three.
Is there any objection from any counselor? All right, then by acclamation, we're going to make that change, two thousand twenty three. I don't hear any objection.
Actually, it's actually correct in the packet.
Okay, right.
So a motion to collectively approve on second reading as amended.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Collective appointments, one ninety five, one ninety six, one ninety seven. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Zee? Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no.
Thank you. Orders, let's take the two nineteen first.
Two nineteen is, give me one second. It is. That the annual November ninth, two thousand twenty, all the property within the city of Newport be taxed equally. And that the method to determine this percentage of the local tax levy be assessed. At each class of property as established so-called residential factor submitted Counselor Charles Tontar.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the referral, please say aye. Any opposed? That's referred. Order two twenty.
Order two twenty is setting the tax rate of the city of Newport for fiscal two thousand twenty one for all classes. Submitted Counselor Tontar.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, just, just a note on this. You know, we generally receive background information. I see that the finance director is on. They were hoping that they would get information back from the state in time for this meeting. They did not. But I believe they anticipate getting it. In time for us to consider it in committee and then bring it before the committee councils whole. So that's why I don't see background information.
And am I right, Clerk Jones, we're not meeting again for three weeks?
You don't meet again for three weeks until November thirtieth. I'm not sure how that timing goes for even everyone.
Okay, well, all right, I'm sure he'll tell us.
Finance Director, that is his hand up.
He does. And Instructor Manning? You're on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to confirm that prior to submitting these two orders. The new growth was certified by the Department of Revenue. So we were able to propose the. Twenty twenty one tax rate. Which is included in the tax classification. Presentation, if you will. So the recommended tax rate is twelve sixty four per thousand. And Phil Brennan and I will be happy to discuss all of the details in committee.
And, and just while we have you, so we're not going to meet again as a full council until the last day of November. Is that going to work?
Yes, if, if tax rate in factor are approved on November thirtieth, that should give us. Time to turn around the tax bills by December thirty first.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Vogel is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to confirm that if, before he spoke. If anything does go out to the Budget and Finance Committee, that it comes to all of us so that we get a chance to review it.
Yeah, that seems fair. Chair Tontar, are you able to copy us all without comment, of course, any materials you get from staff?
Right, yes, certainly.
Okay, and remember, if we wanted to do committee of the whole, we would need a two thirds super majority, so. I might as well ask now, sometimes we haven't done that. So anyone, okay. All right, seeing no further comment, all those in favor referring to Budget and Finance, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So that's referred. So we have order two twenty one, which came in late.
Yes, that was a resolution that I previously had read regarding the two twenty elections.
All right, well, if we're going to consider that tonight, we would need a motion to waive the rules to not send it to committee. I know it's clunky, that's the way it is. And then it is an action by the city council, so we needed two thirds emergency preamble, right?
True.
Does anyone want to make those motions?
Yeah, motion to waive the rules and.
Do the emergency preamble?
Do the emergency, yeah. Motion to waive the rules and call for an emergency preamble to take this up.
Second.
All right, anybody want to speak to those while Clerk Jones writes the emergency preamble asleep? No? Yes, Counsel McCauley.
Yeah, as one of the sponsors of this, I think it's timely and of our. Of our recognition of the hard work, because we're all going to get along, we're going to start getting along in our lives and. We're going to forget all of the work. We're going to appreciate it, but we will forget the work that was put in. There's probably. Two months of prep work that went in for these events. And the amount of coordination and the amount of activity that went on. In my opinion, should be recognized tonight and, and I would hope that we could. Pass this emergency preamble to recognize that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors wish to speak? Now let's do a roll call on the combined motion because it includes the emergency preamble.
Motion to waive the rules and to establish the emergency such that it is. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Counsel Devlin's joined us.
Thank you. Let me back up. Counselor Devlin?
Hmm, this is for you?
Oh, yes. It's really for everyone else but me. I was just kidding, of course. This is when the clerk says I cannot hear you. So Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, then on the underlying approval, is there a motion?
Motion to approve order, yeah, second.
Okay, so I, I think motion, McCauley made the motion and Khan seconded it. Any further discussion? No, this we can do by voice. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any Grinches out there? No, okay.
The clerk has his hand up though, if you might.
Yes.
I, I realize you're extending your graces to let me speak, but I really feel I should. I want to say, I'm so glad you said Office of City Clerk as opposed to the City Clerk. Because as you know, Tricia Kathleen and Katie, as in Tricia Barker, Kathleen Sullivan, Katie Maharn. Were tireless is an understatement. We really started this in the middle of August. And then we went through the primary and everyone was fairly tired at that point. And then we realized. The Herculean task of going forward. When I say we worked eighty plus hours a week, we did. I didn't realize I could still work this hard and. The people that we surrounded ourselves with were the key. Remember, it seems in retrospect now, oh, well, we just did it. But frankly, we weren't sure we could do it at certain points. We had more ballots than we ever expected. We had to devise new schemes of how we were going to open them and run them through our four machines. We became a central tabulation facility to do it. And we hired. When I say hired, not a great monies per hour, but we hired people who stepped forward and said, we just want to help. I almost feel at this point that I want to make a public statement that I apologize to the people who wanted to help. And we didn't have room for them to help. That sounds crazy, but we had seventy to eighty people saying, what can we do? What can we do? We'll volunteer, we'll do anything. So we had back office in addition to the front office of. Five to six people that worked tirelessly. And I mean, I never had anyone say, oh my God. We have to work till six, seven, eight. We have to work on Saturday. Oh, we have to work on Sunday. And then we had fourteen days of early voting and that meant people needed to work weekends and that was fourteen straight days. And I should say the obvious. They were working in a COVID environment where they were exposed. There's just no two ways about it. We, we were exposed to somewhere between. Close to. Close to eight to ten thousand people. That's a lot of people. And we did wear masks. We had our plastic splash guards up, but still. You know, the average age of a poll worker is at risk, including yours truly. So, and then the day of was an extraordinary event also with. I had a lot of people just come forward when you needed them. I had three situations, I'll call it. Because it's HIPAA related, that I needed a backfill twenty four hours before the day of the election. We all woke up in our office and we were at the office at five AM. Just trying to fill the gap, the gap meaning. People that dropped their ballot off the night before to make sure, do I say couldn't vote twice? Not that I'm suggesting the intent was there. And so, and we didn't know whether the militia was coming. We didn't know. I, all I can tell you is that the work was relentless and the pressure seemed the same. So, and I don't mean to tout my own horn. I don't, I'm happy to do it. I'm thrilled to be city clerk. I don't know if I thrilled to do presidential elections, to be quite honest, but, but the, the. It's not my achievement. It's, I've never seen such a group effort. So I have people, I go to Market Basket, people say, hey, aren't you the bow tie guy? Thanks so much. I mean, people really are very appreciative. Not of the bow tie, I don't suggest, I think they're just. So, and I'm sorry to ramble on, but. I just thought I should.
No, I, I think it's, I think we all think it's merited. I want to thank Counsel McCauley for making sure we did this in one night. And what we're going to do is all the councilors, I think, should sign this one, all of us. I mean, we do, we do notice the effort, really. We know what, what you put in. I think the whole city does. So thank you. Again, we're all going to sign this one.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sincerely mean it.
All right. Ordinances.
We have, the first ordinance is ordinance fifty nine, it's a second reading. Of the ordinance to establish a commercial truck route or routes. And for petitioning mass DOT to allow further regulation. It is. Submitted by Counsel Ragman.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Counsel Zee?
Just a quick note, I just want to make sure that the amendments that were made two weeks ago carry in. So I noticed that the version in the packet did not reflect that. So just a. On the, on the amended version as a second reading. Thank you.
All right, for the record, so Water Street should not be in there, it's stricken? Yeah.
Mr. President, it is in the, the. Actions added on the second page, motion to amend to strike Water Street.
Okay. Counsel Zee, did we, is that, is there anything else on that?
No, that's, I just want to make sure we carried it forward, that's all.
Got it, okay. All right, roll call.
Roll call on the motion approved second reading ordinance fifty nine. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance sixty two.
Ordinance sixty two again is the second reading and city council amends existing subdivision A two. Of the code with pertinent part such that the residential parking permit zones will be changed. From October first through April thirtieth and between eight AM and eight PM. Monday through Saturday, May first through September thirtieth, et cetera. Submitted Counsel Ragman.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. Second.
Discussion on this one. A roll call.
Motion approved a second reading ordinance sixty two. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
No.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no, motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance sixty five.
Ordinance sixty five is as follows. It is submitted jointly Counselors Connell and Khan. And it purports to amend the municipal code with respect to the senior citizen property tax work off program.
Counsel Khan.
Yes, motion to refer to Budget and Finance?
Second.
Any further explanation?
Uh, yes, counsel.
Go ahead.
Counsel President, this, just very quickly, this is something just to update, not can be a major change. This is referring to Massachusetts general laws, which already automatically takes into account any changes in minimum wage. However, I would like to send it to Budget and Finance to make sure maybe we could put in some language that would. Ensure that our ordinance doesn't always have to try to be updated to that change. Also, the senior center and all their marketing literatures need to be updated. So I just want to make sure we collectively can. Can communicate this information and make the necessary changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All those in favor of referring this as proposed, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That is referred. I think I said forward and says.
Yes.
Yes, okay. On to committee items. At Hawk and Committee on Economic Development, nothing has gone on. At our committee on Central Waterfront, we did have a meeting last week. I'm going to put it in order. I, I didn't make it this week, but I'll put it in order clarifying that. As we, the five of us who are on the committee voted last week, we're going to extend the deadline. To make a decision of who wins the request for proposals for the landscape design. We felt with the holiday season and other factors, we needed to give until, I think, December twenty third for bidders to respond. And so we would not pick a winner until two thousand twenty one. So we'll have to change the order that formed the committee. We also talked about what we're calling this thing and it really is an expansion of Market Landing Park. It's been Market Landing Park for decades, so. We're going to start referring to it that way. This is the expansion of Market Landing Park. Uh, that was it on that committee. Budget and Finance. Oh, look, Counsel McCauley, I'm sorry.
Uh, one thing, thank you, Counsel President. One thing I'd like to add is the RFP is actually out. Uh, it has hit the central register and. It includes, it includes the RFP plus all the attachments as well. So just, just an update. Thank you.
Great, that's great news. Thank you, Director Port for doing that. Chair Tontar?
Yeah, we have ordered two eighteen, motion to approve. That's the supplemental budget request of eighteen thousand dollars. Because there's an additional student from Newport who is matriculating at Essex North Shore Technical School.
And there's second right, Counsel Khan, did I hear?
Yes.
Further discussion of the item?
I think we're all set on this.
Okay, all those, it's in order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that's unanimous.
That's it, Mr. President, from Budget and Finance.
Thank you. Chair Khan, Education?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. The Education Committee met last Monday at the high school due to the. Election aspect in the senior center. We actually met with our school committee members and we all, the meeting was attended by Superintendent Gallagher as well as Mayor Holliday. Our main conversation topic was on the mayor's letter of non-support for the acts of nineteen eighty seven. We had a good conversation with the school committee members kind of weighing in in terms of. The need for some improvement in how the budget kind of process is done in terms of collaborating. With the, the school committee members a little bit earlier in the stage of. with the, the school committee members a little bit earlier in the stage of, of that development process. And one of the, um, items that came up is, you know, looking at the Acts of nineteen eighty-seven and talking about it a little bit more in details and going around the table and um, really kind of honing into how it would really roll out if it was adopted by the city and playing out the scenario. Uh, talking about pros and cons, talking about other cities that may have adopted. The action item from our Education Committee is myself and my co-chair, um, Sean Riordan of the School Committee, will sit down together to talk a little bit about the budget review process and the timing. And if something like the Acts of nineteen eighty-seven was adopted, how would it go about? What would it take? And kind of walk through those steps and, um, report back to the Education Committee at the next meeting. The next meeting will be on December seventh at five thirty PM. Uh, this will probably be at the Senior Center, which will be back there right before the School Committee member. We are meeting in person, it's seeming to work okay, we're, um, publicly participate via Zoom. And, um, if folks have any other agenda items that they would like us to include in the Education Committee, um, topics, uh, we could definitely, uh, do that. Please send me an email. That's all I have for now. And the strategic plan, this is also, um, the school develops a five-year strategic plan. The next one, um, is gonna start in twenty-twenty-one. So there is a task force or a few task forces being formed for the strategic plan. I was told that I will be on that, but I have not formally been notified of anything yet, but, or when they're gonna start convening. But we did talk about how that strategic plan could really be structured more like a roadmap with some kind of tangible goals, um, ways to measure success, metrics, you know, how could that be used as a policy document that would also help align with any budgetary aspects? So, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tontar.
Yeah, I apologize, I, uh, if, if it's okay with the President, if we could go back to Budget and Finance for a minute, I would like to move to remove Order two fourteen, which is the Low Street Purchase from Budget and Finance. What I'd like to do is, uh, remove it, then, uh, refer it back to Budget and Finance and Planning and Development and the Committee of the Whole. Uh, wanted to do that to give other councilors, with being referred to two committees, there, uh, we, we can't have other councilors speak, so.
Okay, I, I, well, hold on, I, I, I think, just want to make sure that, uh, no one has any objection. I just want to make sure we're doing it right. Does any Council have any objection to going back? No, no objection? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. So you have a motion from, from Councilor Tontar, and seconded by Councilor Khan to bring it out. Let's do it one at a time. So, so motion to bring out Order two one four. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So it's out.
Mr. President, motion to refer Order two one four, the Low Street Purchase to the Committee on Budget and Finance, to the Planning and Development Committee, and to the, uh, Committee, uh, of the Whole.
Okay, any, any further discussion on that? We have a second, uh, from Councilor Khan. This needs a two-thirds, but, uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So, okay, so that, that's done.
Thank you.
So I assume the two chairs will, will find a time and we'll, we'll get on that. Thank you very much. Uh, General Government, uh, nothing. Licenses and Permits, Chair Devlin.
I think you report.
No, that's quick, um, uh, Neighborhood and City Service, Chair.
Nothing to report.
Run a roll. Uh, Chair Shan, Planning and Development.
All right, uh, motion to approve ordinance oh fifty-four, enforcement of the state building code.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Yes, so, uh, just so everyone appreciates what we're looking at here. What this does is restates the local code to avoid confusion between planning departments and the building department. Basically, it's just clarifying master law one forty-three. The sub-bullets A, B, and C are straight from master law. Actually, it reads better than master law because they just use a full-fledged paragraph. Uh, basically, we've got the building inspector, I mean, the building commissioner is supposed to enforce the state building code, uh, is basically states that historic preservation does, uh, prevail over the building code when we have a historic district and the Commonwealth building structures, basically, it says the city inspector can and should enforce all state building codes for all Commonwealth buildings, so basically clarifying our own, uh, state building code in our ordinances.
Thank you. Any further, uh, commentary? Seeing none, roll call.
This is a first reading for ordinance fifty-four.
Councilor Zeeb, Councilor Zeeb raises his hand.
I apologize, um, for the late raise. I just had one quick question. Can you talk a little bit more about, uh, B and, and specifically the, the conflict? Um, so, in other words, does, does B mean that the city could write ordinances that, uh, conflict with state law, state building code, and then, you know, uh, so, let me just play out a scenario for you. So let's say this passes and then a year from now, we, we write an ordinance that says, okay, you know, the, the insulation in an attic has to be in, you know, an R twenty versus, say, the state building codes in R forty-nine. Uh, whatever, I'm just making these numbers up. And so then therefore you have a conflict between the code. This basically says that, um, that the local code would supersede the, the building code. Is that, is that the intent, or is that what this says, or am I not reading it correctly?
I think the example you just used is not appropriate because this one says exterior architectural features. It doesn't have anything to do with interior.
Yeah, but I mean, like, let's say, I mean, there are plenty, there are exterior features particularly around energy, for example, like, uh, you know, windows often are, are complicated and controversial at times. Um, and, and there, there, you know, there could be other things for safety and what have you, say egress or things that relate to doors and so forth. I, I'm just trying to understand if this basically says that, you know, does this open a door to a council creating laws basically to supersede state? Because that's how I read the literal language here, is if you have a conflict, the, you know, you favor the, you favor the, the one, um, you know, whichever one, uh, protects the exterior, so I guess if anybody else wants to help me if I'm not reading the language correctly.
Well, well, I believe it does say that historic preservation trumps the other parts, and this is straight from mass state law. I mean, this is directly from mass chapter one forty-three. So if you're just questioning the interpretation, then we're just questioning the interpretation of state law now. And Council Argon, if you want to chime in here, you're, the expert.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I was the amicus, the rea, the exact reason why I put this in was to restate state law, because a lot of local builders and members of the public, they never look at state law. Um, and so, we should have it clear for everybody that this is the state law. When there are exterior features that are regulated by a local historic, uh, regulation, that supersedes. You, you cannot, and I'll give you an example. So at seventy-seven, uh, Lime Street, um, there were, uh, windows, the architect was not familiar with historic buildings, uh, despite being based in the report. And, um, in discussions with the, uh, building commissioner at the time, it was actually the assistant that was working on it, mistakenly believed that they had to swap out all the windows in order to meet the new energy code. That's expressly not true under state law. That was a mistake. And, um, all this is doing is restating it. Um, you know, if, if councillors disagree with the policy, they really need to go to the state. Um, because this is state law being, uh, repeated.
So just my last follow-up is, you're basically saying that, that B is already state law?
Yes, this is straight from chapter one forty-three, word for word.
Verbatim.
Thank you.
Councilor Tontar.
Yeah, could, this is really just a question, displaying my own ignorance, could, could, could the chair perhaps explain to me the, what the definition of historic district, regional historic district, and architecturally controlled district? And, uh, I mean, other than Fruit Street, um, do we, do, does Newburyport have any of those categories?
Downtown Everly District.
Well, downtown would be architectural design.
That, that is architectural design. Okay, the downtown. So, but Lime Street would, is outside of that? I mean.
Uh, it is, but the, I, I, sorry, I'm getting too much in the weeds, but it's in the discretion already of the, of the building commissioner. They do not have to impose, uh, the restrictions on, um, a historic building uh, in Massachusetts. Again, the mistake was, they thought it was mandatory, both the architect and the assistant, uh, building commissioner at the time. They thought that it was mandatory, yeah.
But that doesn't, this, this paragraph really doesn't address itself to that, right?
No.
Yeah, okay, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, because it's not part of, you're right, it's not part of either, it's not part of the Fruit Street Local Historic District, and it's not part of an architectural design district, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, other questions? All right, let's, uh, do a roll call.
Roll call on the first reading of ordinance fifty-four, Councilor Tontar.
Uh, yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Wallace.
Yes.
Council Zeeb.
Yes.
Council Devlin.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Lane.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council President Argon.
Yes.
First reading passes.
Thank you. Other items from planning?
Yes, uh, motion to receive and file communication two seventy-seven, the Resiliency Plan.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, so we had a really good meeting last week with, uh, Molly Attenborough on the Resiliency Plan. Uh, Councilor Connell was there as well, he was also on this committee and did, you know, thank him for all the work he did. Uh, Molly took the time to speak to the purpose of it, uh, basically defining climate hazards the city is up against in the near future and where our vulnerabilities are. Uh, we discussed the public water supply, the wastewater treatment plant, the national grid substation. Uh, summarized the recommendations in four subsections. One was on infrastructure and installation improvements. Basically, uh, maintaining civil engineering is one of the coolest engineering disciplines out there these days. Uh, we should talk about regulatory administrative approaches. Uh, we had John Eric speak to that one as well. We had community education and mitigation through the carbon footprint reductions. Uh, Julia Godfordson actually spoke to us from the Conservation Commission perspective and how they already adopted regulations where permits required to comply with future floodplains. Uh, John Eric spoke about how we should be looking at updating our ordinances to make sure that we are addressing resiliency in the future and gave us some very good examples that, uh, I was reading about this weekend, how Miami-Dade County is having to deal with this, and we all seen those pictures. Uh, Councilor Connell brought up some really good points about how, as a council, we should be looking at this because we, we need to be thinking about how we're going to address infrastructure improvements in the future and how we're going to be paying for them, and resiliency needs to be a priority for us. Uh, some really good conversation with Councilor McCauley and Council Wallace, uh, asking how we're going to operationalize this plan and how we're gonna educate people on it. And Molly mentioned that they don't have a good plan right now for education just because of COVID right now. We would typically do this in a public meeting, but without having the opportunity to get together in large groups. They are gonna address this in their next meeting sometime this month, and I don't have the date for that, but, um, something to keep an eye on, and, uh, very good discussion. Just want to thank Councilor Connell. He, uh, had some good comments, how all of this really came about from the looking at how Hurricane Sandy was dealt with, so, a lot of good conversation, so that's it.
Thank you. Um, before we file it, so the committee spent some time going through this for us. I did not attend the meeting. For example, I'm relying on them. Do councillors have any questions, uh, for the committee chair? No. Okay, uh, all those in favor of receiving and filing, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. Anything else, Chair?
That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, who's next? Sorry, um.
Public safety.
Public safety.
Uh, nothing tonight, just, uh, Council Chair.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, public utilities.
Nothing tonight.
Rules.
Nothing tonight.
Good of the order. Council Khan.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Council President. I just want to let folks know that the, um, the court, the Ordnance Review Committee is meeting, and we have our next meeting on the eighteenth of November at six thirty PM, and, uh, this is something that we're supposed to be doing on every year that ends with a five or a zero. And, um, just, if folks are interested in chiming in, we're really reviewing section by section and doing changes that are not gonna be substance, substantial or substantive, uh, and, but if there's anything that collectively can be kind of tightened up or things that are obvious, like, um, you know, naming of certain departments, or sometimes aldermen or selectmen's being used, and we have City Council. So we're doing changes like that. So if folks have any, um, anything that they personally already know about in these, uh, sections, feel free to send an email, um, to me, and I could make sure it comes on our list that we'll be updating. Thank you.
Thank you, um, and I want to acknowledge, uh, for the public that, uh, uh, our special meeting earlier tonight, uh, did got started late. Um, Councilor Zeeb had already warned, uh, me last, last week that we had to do a Zoom webinar so that the public could hear us vote whether to go into executive session. And then we would go into a Zoom meeting, uh, if, if we, if that motion passed. Um, I, of course, completely forgot, um, that I had to do that, so I was sitting on the meeting line uh, with, uh, only the mayor and Attorney Lane. And I, I just want to reassure the public that there was nothing discussed, uh, in, in closed session. Um, we then realized the error, again with the help of Councilor Zeeb. And that's what all that was about. So we did eventually get into, did vote to go into executive session. Uh, Council Devlin did not participate, he was, uh, recused from the whole thing. Um, and, uh, uh, Councilor, uh, Zeeb was recused, um, from one item. Um, uh, twelve Harrison, and then, uh, we did not come out of executive session. So I apologize for the confusion. It's completely caused by my amnesia. Is there anything else? How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.